And I don't know, and whoever's online, welcome. We're going to start with administrative reports. Sure.
Starting the year off gearing up. What's up next week with our leadership team? We're down in Lakeland Resort and Cable. That's all our directors, counselors, principals, staff. Let's go over the beginning of the school year and make sure everything's in place to start. Buildings are looking good. Heard around a little bit, the elementary today, high school. As we get ready for staffing kids in the next couple of weeks to return. Like to commend the custodial staff, our contract with secretaries for getting everything ready to roll. We're working on improving our website and our communications in and out of the district. So, Cody, Matt, administrative team are going to meet next week, Monday at nine, just review. We've looked at a company that's going to work with us to not only contract communications in and out of the district, but also looking at redesigning our website, making sure it's very accessible for everyone. And just giving it a nice new look. It's easier to navigate. We'll start by looking at what parts of the website are accessed the most. Ivy, Angie have talked about some, no, it's not going to be a correction. I'm joking. They looked at what areas have the most hits that'll give us an idea of where to start. And then I, I think there was in some internal surveys on the biggest thing is going to be for us to find people who want to send us things. We have the backbone now. It's just what type of information? Where does it come from? Who gets it? And how do we get it done? So we're going to be working on that as well as a complete redesign. Finalizing a memorandum of understanding with the city. Allowing us to get some more athletic fields. So right now we're looking at the lower field, little league field, softball field, baseball field. And then ongoing memorandum of understanding, we would maintain, I mean, most things. Everything still, we need to go through the city for a capital. Make sure we're following all those. But when Shanda returns next week, we'll be able to finalize that. Gives us a lot of flexibility. And as I put in my report, could set us up for 10, 80 fun, 10 and fun, 80 type relationship. Or better coordination with youth programs, the school programs, community programs, citywide. So having this in place is a first, it's a good first step to where this might be able to develop into a full-time position as well as when we're looking at our athletic director, administrator and activities. Can we consolidate that? It could be bigger than just school. That MOU will just add to the space that we have available. Spotlight in September will be summer school. I won't get into that. Because we had a very successful summer school this year. Long range planning. So all of our committees are starting to gear up. Long range planning will meet in September and we're having school perceptions that come in. And it's kind of a two parter. One's going to be gathering information from the community on our next step. We had the information. We got some costs. We identified needs in the district. So getting something out to the community on what would they support in our next step? Should we study a referendum? Should we study multiple opportunities? So they'll be there to talk to us on the, at long range planning in September as well as achieve three thousand. Also looking forward to that continuing. And then some exciting things at the beginning of the year and throughout the year that I'm sure will come up in our board report. And I'm working, I gave permission to Amy Trimble from adventures, venture us. In town policy requires that if anyone wants to use our logo, they need to get permission from the district administrator. Which is fine. They want to use our logo. They're going to sell some things. They might partner with one of our groups in, in the schools for a fundraiser. So percentage of the sales will go back to Dustin Long, Strip Peru, Haiti. Dominican Republic, one of those places that are going somewhere. So good. We did a little history on how did other groups get those things? It's easier just to start fresh and move forward. So we do some arrangements in the past from IGA to others. And we're just like, okay, they must have permission somewhere and we'll follow policy. So I can anticipate some things coming up with Amy quick. So we found the semi official logo and we forward that.
Okay, Cody, can I ask you a question? Is there, is there a way to have like an amplifier or something in here? Because I bet you couldn't hardly hear any of that because I, but I could hardly hear. No, but I'm saying it was very hard for me to hear. So I would think if with your back to him, I bet he couldn't hear anything.
It's the fans. He said it is something that we can work on. We don't have anything right now, but it's probably and the one doctor writer being sick. He's not quite as loud as normal.
Okay, then can I ask everybody to suffer for a while and shut the fans off? Yeah, sorry. Cause I.
All right. Well, then I'll jump up.
So I sent in my report, you saw most that I just want to touch base on a couple of things on it. When it comes to the handbook, you look at the middle school, high school student handbook. Just making sure that we recognize that I took two handbooks and combined them now into one. Instead of having a middle school, one in a high school, and that basically said the same things. Now we have one, made sure to change our language so it matches our they, them choices to make sure that we are covering and making sure that everybody is covered. And that it's just got a different format. So people who are looking at it online, or if when you're looking at it, it just has a different format that it had before. All the links are live. You can just click on the links in the PDF and it'll take you right to that section. So just makes it a little bit easier to get through. So we just reformatted it. In terms of professional development, I'm working on building that calendar. We have a few things on the calendar already for our illustrative math. We have some dates for there. We're starting to just reach out to CISA 12 and get dates from them that we can use for them for different trainings. We have, or I have sent out the list of information that teachers said that they were interested out to the PDC group to get some feedback about who we could reach out in terms of people on staff to lead those as well. So that process is beginning, that calendar is getting built. I'm hoping to have it more solidified before the first day in service. But again, it'll be a fluid document because we'll keep adding things. So outside of the things on the report, those are really the big things that have been coming up that I've been working through the last couple of weeks.
Thank you.
All right. Elementary is officially gearing up for the start of school year. Open house is on Thursday, the 31st. So that's when students come in, they drop off all their school supplies. Families get to meet the teachers, see the classrooms, play in the playground, check out the garden and just spend time at the, in the building. First day of school is Friday, September 1st, and then it's actually the first home football game for our high school team. And so we thought it's a perfect combination. We're going to have a big family event. After school, maybe around five o'clock and then get a bit, a bunch of kids to come. Grill out some hot dogs and do some face painting and some signs and just have a lot of fun, get a chance for families to get to visit and connect. And then everyone can head down the hill to the football game and cheer on the Castle Guard. So we're pretty excited about that. There'll be an email going out soon about a parent advisory committee. It's something we've had in the middle school, high school in the past and something we're going to add to the elementary this year. And so there'll be an opportunity for parents to and guardians to apply for that. And then we'll get a nice diverse crew covering a variety of grade levels and just different experiences and priorities. And to start off, we'll probably meet quarterly and address, you know, different topics, including just how to keep that family engagement strong, school safety, school improvement, all of those major topics. So I'm looking forward to that, that team. The elementary handbook does not have many changes, just a few technical corrections. Last summer was a big revamp. So really that's when we did all the reformatting and restructuring. So it looks very similar. And then that parent advisory committee will be a group who will continue to provide feedback and look at that and support updates moving forward. In the ELC, we're adding five new infants off of our waitlist. So we have all of those little start dates and little trial runs happening throughout the month of August. And they'll all be joining us by September. We're also rearranging in the toddler room and the preschool room a little bit. So we're going to switch those two physical classrooms to support the needs of the students and the numbers that we have in each of those rooms. And so just wanted to commend the ELC on being flexible and just thinking of what our students need and creating really flexible, dynamic learning spaces for them. Today they were actually, actually yesterday, they were up at the school forest for the day, even the toddler room and the preschool room. And then today a Castle Guard Kids childcare program was up there at the school forest. When it comes to school improvement work, one of our priorities was that we wanted to make it a continuous motion from last year through the summer and into next year, rather than starting and stopping, just based on those state test scores. We want to continue this work. And so I'm very excited to say that we have been able to do that. We've done a lot of work with the standards. So updating the pacing guides. You might've heard me laugh when Dr. Rider mentioned the curriculum page on our website. It has the lowest number of hits. But it is really important and it's a nice option for families to see. We actually do send it home in a lot of different ways, which is probably why they don't get it on the website. But we continue to update it and rearrange those standards so that they're really going to be impactful for students and it reflects our data and our needs. We're also working updating our curriculum resources. And you mentioned illustrative math. So we'll be using that in kindergarten through sixth grade as well as seventh grade and eighth grade, algebra one, algebra two and geometry. It fits really well with all the priorities we set last year. And so it's a really nice resource for that. Been working with CISA 12 on starting some trainings this summer and we'll continue those into the school year. I'm also working on building thinking classrooms. That's a little bit more of the way that you teach rather than what you're teaching and it's very engaging. It's very dynamic. It's all of the research on what keeps students engaged to the highest level. And it focuses on the grade level curriculum for the entire block. And so it really maximizes the instructional period. We'll also use the Tara West guided phonics and 4K through second grade. So that's an expansion from last year. And so we're excited about that to continue that strong phonics instruction. And they also have some nice support plans in place for third through sixth grade to continue that phonics instruction and support. Other than that, achieve 3000 will continue forward. We saw some nice growth in reading proficiency related to the implementation of achieve 3000. Dr. Rider mentioned that somebody from achieve will be presenting at long range planning and connecting with that group. That will also have two presenters come and work with staff as the school year gets rolling, providing that more individualized level of professional development. And then we're actually going to host up here at night and it will be through Zooms to make it, to make it as accessible as possible for families. And then they can learn about the program, how to log in and to how to work on assignments, activities with their child. How to look at the, the data and the progress and to highlight some of the strengths that we have and some of the growth that we've made. So that will happen the last week in September. Other than that, just wanted to mention that we've been also working with CISA 12 on math, professional development, restorative practices, especially related to classroom management. That will be something we integrate into our back to school in services as well as our staff meetings this year. And then just working on a comprehensive continuous improvement plan. That's something that we started last year. Working with each of the experts at CISA 12 in each of their unique fields, but then making one cohesive plan that worked well. It's something that they actually sort of packaged and shared with other districts and other districts are doing that too. It's exciting to be, be a part of that work and to know that what we're doing when it comes to school improvement is happening in other areas and we're taking the lead.
Couple of additional things. Principal offices are very busy. We have 32 new open world students during this. So our slide is to reach out to those families, have those families come in, take tours. If they're service done, they're applying for an IP is not required, but we have just a renewed revise meeting. That's there. Connect review, anything that's in the IP to make sure that they understand what the previous was good and, and how we're going to move that forward. So very busy buildings as we get ready for 32 students. We want them, because that's one of the more forms is connected. Get them connected to us. And also just adding, I knew you were talking about achieving. Came up with a long explain last year about parents wanting to be more involved, helping us get over that COVID and partnering with them. What can we do as parents to help? And combining them that night with the chief 3000 is going to give them the tools. When a kid comes home and says, why don't we homework tonight? I don't need to study anything. Well, I'm going to achieve and here's how I know I can log in. And here's our giving parents that access and development profession, you know, how to help their children.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions for any of the administrators? Thank you. We'll go into public comment. If you would like to speak for public comment, each person has three minutes and it's their time alone and cannot pass that time onto someone else. If you have concerns or comments about individuals, those are not appropriate during public comment times. So please don't say anything that would identify circumstances or a person or a group of people directly by what you say. Be respectful. People on Zoom are welcome to join public comment. Please put your name in the chat. So we'll start right in, in the building here. Would Nick, would you like to make a public comment? Okay.
As a, I am a citizen of this district and I don't think I've ever really addressed the board as a citizen. I've always been an employee or superintendent. So I just want to just share a little positive with you all, I guess, is why I wanted to come up here. I guess I'm very pleased to be living in a community, paying taxes in a community that has administrators and a staff that I think are effective and support the good work that you do. And I think we're also a district in Washburn. Those of us that live here, that is, that is well governed. I think this is a board we can all be proud of. And I think what the impetus behind those positive comments is because I really feel like there is a student first approach to everything that goes on here. And that, and I hope that, and I would encourage you all to just always keep the student first in every decision you make and in every discussion you have and really be mindful of where you put your energy as a board member. And always keep it based on that student interest and what's best in students. So thank you. And it's a great community to live in and I'm happy that you're my board. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone online? Cody, is there anybody in the chat?
Charmaine.
Okay, Charmaine.
Yeah. Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
I am really appreciative of the microphones. So thank you for that. I know a few times I've emailed about having microphones so that it's easier to hear board members. It is a little bit harder to hear when folks are not mic'd. I, I'll just say that. So if there's a way to have more microphones. Or like you said, some amplifiers in the room so that accessible for everybody. I just thank you. Thank you for doing that because I want to be engaged in board meetings and I can't always come into town. And I know there are other folks that for whatever reason can't always make it in person and yet might want to be engaged. So I just, I want you to hear that I really appreciate you taking the effort to, to follow through with that. So thank you for that. Also just want to echo the sentiment that summer school was awesome this year and I particularly loved that things like swim lessons were a part of the summer school options. I think just having something like that as a skill, you know, we don't really have a whole lot of access to swimming lessons and I mean, you got to go to Bayfield. And so just the fact that that was on the summer school options was fantastic. Now, was my child super excited that I signed him up for swimming lessons? That's debatable, but you know, I think his, after checking in with his teachers, I think his swim skills improved and I just, I, I love that. I also loved that there were other classes that really got students out and like to the spreading center and to do different things. And I know that that busing is extra cost to the district, or I'm assuming that it's extra cost. But I just want did you to know that it was awesome. So really appreciate that. Um, I'm also glad to hear that there's some website updates coming. I've had to even email because I wasn't sure. Having never had a child in high school before, I was like, where are the class list supply lists for high school students? And so that was a little confusing to me. So, but I appreciate the quick response. And this is maybe more of an update, but because the next board meeting is on the 14th. Just a note that we've been working with a male elementary administration on what we're calling Castle Guard Crew. And we have, I, I can't see Ms. Ivy's face, but I hope it's okay. I'm saying this. Is it a thumbs up? Okay. But we have a meeting that I'm really excited about. I've already gotten some folks that are interested. Anyways, it's going to be on the 13th from six to seven 30 in the library. And we're just really working to cultivate this group of parents and volunteers that are willing to make regular commitments to being at the school and helping in whatever capacity is needed.
Thanks, Charmaine. Shelley was the other, Shelley?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you to the, to the board for letting me speak tonight. My name is Shelley Hagland. I'm the mother of two daughters who graduated from Washburn. And I dedicated 10 years in the district as an employee working in all grade levels until one year ago, when my husband and I relocated to the Green Bay area. As everyone is preparing and planning for the upcoming school year, I'm here tonight to request one thing of the board, administration and staff of this district. Education, not indoctrination of our students. The main focus and effort of everyone should be on doing anything possible to make up for the two plus years of lost face-to-face instruction, social interaction due to school closures and mask requirements. Separation of all students with an emphasis on pre-K and elementary age students who lost out on crucial development periods in their life when, which they will never fully gain back. The district reports cards, grade level test scores and behavior at discipline in all grade levels. Humanate may not want to think or accept that indoctrination is happening within the district, but it is. It started during my time in Washburn when staff started using pronouns and email signatures. In my opinion, this sends a message of and initiates a conversation of this is how I identify my gender. Personal beliefs on gender identity, sexual orientation and the politics surrounding this are topics that in my opinion do not belong within the walls of the district. I'm asking the board, along with administration and the policy committee to work directly with Neola to develop, pass and implement a policy to not allow Washburn School District employees or volunteers with the school email to use pronouns in communications in the email signatures. In addition, no Washburn School District employee, volunteer, parent, garden, guardian or student should be reprimanded in any way for not addressing another by what is, what that person considers to be their preferred pronoun. It is not the responsibility of the school district to affirm anyone's preferred pronoun. The post-admission statement of the Washburn School District is, and I quote, "Our mission is to enable students to enter the global society with the knowledge, skills and habits and attitudes required to be contributing citizens. I am extremely proud of the time that I, my husband and both of my daughters were and are still a part of the Washburn Castle Guard family. The district, the district desperately needs to return to what exactly it means to be a castle guard. And it is this mindset the district needs to refocus on in order to return to the most important part of educating our children, which is education, not indoctrination. Thank you to everyone for the opportunity for me to speak freely at tonight's meeting."
Thank you. Is there anyone else online? Okay, okay. I'm going to make a public comment. I don't know if that is the way it's supposed to be, but I am going to anyway. So I was at the ambulance dance a couple of weeks ago and my husband and I sat across, I told you the story. Sat across from a couple and we were chatting with them. It turns out that they were up here vacationing, but they're from Texas. He was a professor at A and M University in the area of horticulture. And his wife also worked in the horticulture department at A and M. And they took the garden tour that day, which included the school garden. And they were absolutely amazed at the garden. She said, first of all, how many schools have gardens? And second of all, how many schools have a garden like that? So they were incredibly impressed. And but it was just amazing, amazing. So anyway, I just wanted to pass that on as a public comment. Yeah, it was great. It was fun to talk to them. All right. Without any more public comments, let's move on to financial reports and bills.
So if you ever wanted to flex your inner accountant muscles, you could come and review financials during the transition between fiscal years. But what I want to say is that Janet is always, and now I see her on the call, has been just super helpful, answering questions and allowing allowing me to help the community understand and just do the due diligence of the financial reports. So, so it's been great. And I moved to approve the financial reports for 20, for July 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other questions? On favor? And I opposed motion here. Committee reports, personnel committee?
Okay, we met on Monday. We went over the staffing for both schools. And what else did we talk about? Yeah. And the curriculum about how some classes may have very few students in them that we need to keep those classes because if the kids can't get it here, they'll go someplace else. And it goes in waves and that sometimes there's a lot of kids in those classes. And sometimes there's very few kids in those classes. So we're going to really make sure that we do that. Is there anything else I missed?
I think it was just, you know, went through every single grade level.
And the special ed department. Yeah.
Any other questions for the personnel committee? And then we'll move on to consent agenda, which we have a number of things, but I don't know that we can just pass it up without giving our appreciation to Tom for his years of service here. So you can kind of sneak that into consent agenda, but I think we do need to recognize you and all of your time here and, and that we appreciate your, your time. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
On favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Discussion items. CISA 12 update. Okay. Now you two can fight over it.
Well, it's easy because I don't have anything.
Okay, there you go.
Our meeting is later on this week.
Okay. Preliminary budget.
All right, Jen, turn on your bike when you're ready. Again, this is a preliminary budget. Lays out everything that we know. I like the major changes that are going in the budget staff, retiring the staff being added, revenue coming in, other expenses. And then Janet takes that document that I keep embedded in this document that you have in the shared file. First page in the cap is basically and then the rest are expenditures. Gives you an idea of everything that's in the budget. This will change between now and October. Adjustments to the budget that you received prior to the end of the meeting, then you'll see. And then you'll move back again. So the budget that you have means all of the means that I have in a district staffing means with the increase in 32 divisions, students should see that revenue line that'll change. That's a stay the entire year. And then also have those that are leaving at the end of summer. Those are things that will adjust. If you look at that one line, one point six. So horrible. I think it's a little bit because it does impact. Probably we engage that 26 to 29% of our population does not how do we make sure we feel connected and supportive? And we'll work for ways within our budget, within our website, within our program, transportation accessibility to get those kids and parents. It's a nice issue to have. I hope they're really great to see that as a horrible. But the budget, like I said, is balanced. And when you look at a projection, we're looking at a slight increase in our no rate based on tuition that is going up and based on state that's not ending this year and all the shifts with the tax payer. So we're at points, it was around five nine as in Norway last year. No slight increase, so not significant, but a slight to government, which is important. Still a really good financial situation for the students. Uh, still a really good financial situation for the students.
Any questions?
Um, I was gonna say that is an uptick, that thirty-two is an uptake from like something that we got in June. We had like twenty-something in June.
In the summer, we have that alternate enrollment type period. Uh, and we're still getting more kids. Now it's sort of school, but it was just probably this, so this is the time where we'll get, you know, put in blocks and kids and start thinking about school. Okay, well, if you want to go here, then they'll do the ultimate.
Okay.
Again, it's especially with certain elementary. Uh, it's, I don't know, so we guess, but we've been guessing fairly well over the years, and that kindergarten number was kind of a little bit below, one, three, went out app, and then we have.
Ah.
Hiring the best possible people to get in there, knowing that we can see that expansion every year.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Um, well, knowing that Tom's retirement letter was coming in here, I started doing some research on a superintendent search and how we would go about that. And had a meeting with Nick one day. Um, and I apologize, I thought I sent on the new information that he sent. I must have forgot to send it to the board. Sorry. But we'll talk about that. Um, I talked to him about the possibility of CISA twelve doing a superintendent search. And I also talked to um, the School Board Association, like Ben Niehaus. Um, some of their ways of going about it is very similar, their their timelines, um, how they go about doing it. They they have like a two-year guarantee so that if we select somebody who doesn't serve out the initial two years, they um, will do the next search. Um, they they both have obviously different um, ways of um, connecting with people throughout the state. Um, CISA has done eight districts. Um, and has been, they also provide executive coaching during that first year for a new superintendent.
CISA twelve, you said, has filled eight.
Eight.
And what's the time period? Is it like in the last?
In twenty twenty-two.
Oh, in twenty twenty-two?
The last two years.
The last two years. Okay.
Um, their their cost for their services is six thousand dollars. Um, they do the posting, they cover costs of meals, snacks, beverages, that interview sessions. Um, so that's all part of that as long, also with that that mentoring piece. Um, they'll meet with us to lay out timelines, um, set salaries, look at salaries, benefits. Um, they'll advertise the position. Um, they use, you know, statewide networks through CISA, send out brochures to potential candidates, um, do the posting in different places. Um, do a survey with district staff and community looking for um, ideas of what traits people are looking for in a new superintendent. Um, conduct um, community meetings if we desire. Um, go through that application process, come up with the, you know, the, what we need to have in there, compile scores and um, look at the different frameworks for what attributes we're looking for. Um, they'll do a selection of candidates for first round of interviews. Um, the board is always, of course, in charge of who we interview and and what we end up doing there. Um, and then during that second round, then the board becomes much more um, involved. Um, I'm just trying to overview this, so sorry if I miss any of the big points, please step in if you, if I'm missing anything. Um, they also um, do the contacting media with names of finalists. Um, they have a um, a process to review all the data. Um, and then you make the selection, and after the selection's made, then they contact those candidates. Uh, they do the negotiations, the contract negotiations with them. Um, also contacting the unsuccessful candidates. And then again, do the executive coaching with that new superintendent. Um, they meet monthly for the first year with the with the coach. Um, and it's all part of the that same search fee. And of course, the two-year guarantees. So that's kind of an overview of CISA. And I'll do an overview of um, the School Board Association, and then if anybody has questions of Nick, we can ask that. Is that okay? All right. Um, they also, the School Board Association, um, do, will do the same thing as far as that guarantee for two years. Um, they are a facilitator between the board and administrator during part of those early years. Um, they will help with the administrative evaluation for the first three years. Um, we can subscribe to that now, but it's it's a service that they offer for free then if we go through them. Their timeline and hiring is they're looking at like a three to five month process. Um, they'll do some one or two focus groups with the community to survey and survey um, staff to see what it is that we're looking for. They'll develop an administrative profile. Um, they'll post the vacancy. And review and decide applicant interviews for the first to second round. They'll organize their reference checks, they do background checks. Um, they would probably look at starting late October, November. Um, have a late fall, early winter posting. Their cost is between eleven to thirteen thousand dollars. Um, there's a gentleman from Land of Lakes who would probably be our consultant because he would be the closest. Um, and that's about what he had to say. So.
Um, what is our goal this evening? Information, information, or do we have to decide?
I don't, I'm, I think we can decide. I don't know if you want to decide, but I'm just, you know, we could also ask them to come and do a presentation. I know Nick said that he would do, and they would do a presentation for us also, if you want them to come in person. Um, the other thing I did talk to Nick about is um, if he would sit down with us as a board and talk about administrative structure. Because, you know, there's a lot of questions that we have to figure out there as far as um, how we're going to arrange administration with with the people service director and superintendent and.
Okay, I have another question. Um, can you remind me again? I know you said it and it's in the email, but what was the um, CISA fee?
Six thousand.
Okay.
Um, Nick, is your time, is CISA twelve's timeframe the same as WASB's?
It's customizable, yeah. I mean, I think you look typically about one whole thing and uh, another interview and hiring process.
Okay, and and you also would start at the, in the fall?
Yeah, I would probably, I mean, officially post it probably like on or December first. You could post two or one, I think, too. But we could have that.
I just have a quick point of order. Do we have to do any kind of like voting to be able to ask him questions or like, or we just ask? Um, because I don't know if he's specifically on the agenda. I, that's just a quick question. Maybe you know that Robert's. He's kind of here as a consultant.
He is awesome.
So, so this is the agenda. Okay, all right. Okay. Okay, I just wanted to double check and verify that too. Um, okay, great, thanks. Nick, are you our point person if we were to go with CISA?
Yes.
Um, this might be, it's, it's not a question of, I don't, I don't want to have a gotcha question. But how many um, positions were you not able to fill in the past two years? Like, were, did you, like, for everybody who had a request from you, were you able to fill a position or?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, and I, why don't you talk with the mic?
It'd probably be better.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Um, no, we we typically, you know, we recommend that, you know, you post it, you go through the process. Um, but we've done a couple searches in like July. And um, but we we typically encourage boards to go through a process, and if you don't find anybody you like, we can look at an interim, you know, um, we've always found someone we like, even in July, we actually placed two really good people in July.
Um, for that coming school year?
Yeah, we did. Um, but we didn't know, but we thought we'd try. And um, but what regardless, even if it's an interim, and then we have to go back in a year from now, it's still, it would be covered in that fee. So it does, it's it's a one-time thing till you get somebody here two years. Um, and, you know, we live here, so, you know, we'll, anything, anytime you want, it's at a board meeting. Um, the nice thing about me is I don't cost anything extra when you, when I come. You can always have me here.
Well, and that was part of the, when I was saying that he would sit down with us to talk about administrative structure, that's not part of the search fee, that would be something that he would do. Because he's, because he's a CISA director, that he came over here and 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 talked to us about that.
I mean, I don't have to point out the obvious, it's like half the cost for like.
Yeah, and the, I, the, the number one reason why it's the cost is so less is because I don't, um, you know, the, the, myself and the directors that do this, we don't get paid anything extra to do it. So your consultants, your people that are doing the search, you've already since paid for them. So that's why we keep the cost so much low, and that's why um, not every CISA does this. There's about four of the twelve that do it. We're one. Um, we've placed all the superintendents in CISA twelve the last two years. So um, like I said, eight other boards have gone with us and um, and that's, that's the selling point, but we probably, we try not to stop there. I think we try to say the selling point is we're here to support that person long-term. It's not just do the search and then leave.
Right.
We're here and we'll be here supporting.
Can you do the background checks as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think we're in a good spot there because we're still in the game, and so we really can talk to other agency administrators, other superintendents to, you know, so you don't have somebody sliding through that shouldn't be here. Which is always a concern.
Mm-hmm. Um, part of the extra cost for the School Board Association also is travel.
Yeah.
You know, because they, they have a limited, they limit how much they charge for the people that are so far away, but um, it still adds up, I'm sure. Um, the other piece that that Tom and I have talked about, and I'm not exactly sure where it is, but talking about doing the strategic plan. And that is something that we're looking at CISA doing also. And um, and I talked to Nick about that, if that could be something that could be done earlier in the year. So we would have that as a piece of our um, information for what we're looking for.
Chris is coming to a large, but not totally.
Okay.
So we need to see that's all. He's not entertained.
Um, it depends on how long we spread the meetings out. It's like four meetings. And then he comes back.
So basically, I just wanted to do just that preliminary research of what those two are. I didn't think that we wanted to go to a private company to do it. I mean, those seem, these two seem like the most logical.
Those double cost.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
And so I just wanted to bring you this information, and then um, as far as a a point of order of how we're going to do it, that's for us to decide and discuss. You know, we can um, request that they come up and speak to the board individually, and, you know, you can hear the whole spiel from everybody. Um, you can take this preliminary thing and say, hey, let's just do this. Um, that's, it's really up to the board as a whole, and, you know, so what are you gonna do?
Can I ask you just a procedural question?
Absolutely. Okay.
Truthfully, I was.
I think it's, uh, if you're moving a contract, so probably, yeah.
So we need to post as an action item.
Okay. So we couldn't decide for sure tonight. Okay.
You could say this.
Let's go move in this direction.
And then you could put it on just for an action. You can invite people to October for some.
I see.
It would require.
Okay. So any more discussion on it? Do you wanna? Anybody have an opinion at this point in time? Do you want to have more people, you want to have, you know, a full presentation from Nick and from the School Board Association? We can arrange that. Um, does anybody have initial thoughts?
I I would pick CISA.
I mean, it's, yeah, it seems like a no-brainer to go with CISA. The only thing that told me back is I don't want to do something that's important without making sure that we really checked our options. Kind of seems like a great.
It's kind of nice to have somebody local and then have backup and somebody you can reach out to and um, it, I just see that. He knows the area. He knows.
He knows the school pretty well, too.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
We have a culture of continuous quality improvement, and we have a culture of like being supportive to our people. And so why wouldn't we want, you know, coaching and support and somebody who already is engaged in our strategic plan and already doing these things? That would clearly be the like ninety percent yes category above and beyond any other agency that we could go with. Um, and even in this day and age, like uh, your your Rolodex probably doesn't matter as much anymore. It doesn't, like, we can have a broad search of candidates. And I think that it says something to have like a a quote, small, it's not CISA's not a small agency, but like to have that partnership. Um, because that's philosophically, I think, who we are. So I'd be, I'd be ready to um, look into the emails that you had sent out again, because I had trouble with my email this week. So I'd love to like look at them again, but put it on the agenda for an action item next month.
Okay.
For for CISA, you know, I don't think we have to have a presentation, a formal presentation from um, Washington.
Okay. Um, okay, then I have one more question. If we're, we're generally looking, going to CISA twelve for the search. And and Nick will come in and speak with us as to the um, administrative structure. Do we want to do that? And we can do that anytime because that's not a piece of the search. So we could have him do that anytime. I don't know if that would have to be during a regular meeting, or can we do that as a, as a special meeting, or how do you, would you typically do that?
I think that would be all the time. Yeah, I think better for special, and it's partly because I know that September, over, I'm not here this first eight. So um, that, that, that would be the only way, but we have other people to do it too, but I would rather do it. So, yeah. I think that's a important piece.
I think so, too.
To, yeah. I, or the skill set. I understand what your own instructions.
Great.
Um, would you like to do that prior to the next board meeting then? What would work for Nick? What works for you?
Whenever, you know, if I'm available, I think we can, you know, whatever works.
Uh, you tell me what.
I would, I would say, let's, let's do a quick poll of like where we're at and have like a couple of dates, you know, how we had like a couple of dates that we could like pick from and like include Nick and um, and whoever like figure out who would be in on that kind of discussion. And send out a couple of dates, because I know that like, oh, I'm gone for two weeks at the end of this month, and then.
Yeah, I know we did this before. It's like.
Yeah.
It can be hard.
Um, and if it doesn't work in the next like three weeks, then we try it again for September.
Mm-hmm.
That's a good point that Tina brought up. So what, is it just the board that is going to be?
Having that.
Having that discussion? So it's just Nick and the board? Is that how it works?
It's up to you. I mean, I think I'd want to, you know, administer ministers.
Yeah.
The administrator.
I would, I would feel comfortable with that also, whether you met with them separately and brought that information to us, or if they were also included on a special meeting. Um, just because I'm not an expert in school administration, and I um, I would love to hear that perspective and organization, school organization, you know.
That would be good.
Yeah, I would just assume that we were all together.
All together, yeah. So now, two more people's schedules, we have to look at.
Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll try to come up with a, a date. It, you know, I'm sure it won't be hard trying to figure out eight people.
In the next six weeks.
Inch per inch of. And so the next couple of weeks might be.
Tough.
Checks.
Yes. Right, right.
Well.
Services are coming out, like, there's a lot.
Well, and I, having been there, the first few weeks of school isn't that exactly a, you know, easy.
Maybe after September, another discussion, September.
Sure.
They just give like five. They're, they're gonna be very busy.
Mm-hmm. That, does that make sense for everybody?
It doesn't.
Does that make sense to you, Nick?
Yeah, so I just.
And then next month, this will be as an action item for. Okay, perfect. All right, thank you, Nick, for being here to answer questions. Okay, individual action items.
I moved to, uh, prove the Ashland Daily Press is the district's official publication.
My second.
Questions? On favor?
I.
I. Opposed, motion carried.
Uh, I move to approve Brummer Brink as the official depository for the district funds.
Second.
Any questions? On favor?
Right.
Oppose? Motion carried. I move to call for a vote to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four middle school, high school, school handbook.
My second.
Questions? All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? Motion carried. You guys are good, keep going.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four elementary school handbook.
My second. Questions, all favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carried.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four middle high school athletic handbook.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? Motion carried.
I move to vote to approve the, uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four coaches handbook.
My second.
Questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carried.
I need to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-two middle school and high school co-curricular handbook.
My second.
Questions, all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carried. I move to call for a vote to approve the mentors in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year Ivy Murato, Beth Reed, Andrew Grimm, Chris Gaber. Chandra Pringle, Jocelyn Lightner, and Janet Jensen.
My second.
Any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move to vote to approve the athletic field light states two.
My second. Um, and you had an amount for that? Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move to approve the preliminary twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
My second. Any questions? All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? Motion carried.
I move to approve John Mickle as the athletics trainer.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carried. Before we vote on the next one. The next two, actually. Uh, Tom, would you explain a little bit about, um. The, when you're, when you say that the teacher is pending a DPI license approval. And would you explain a little bit about the different? The protocols or the different things that you look at when, when there's hiring? Especially when you come up against someone who may be certified and, and others who are not certified, because I know that these two are not at this point.
Um, well, due to the history, uh, with PPI over the years has changed licensing made it a little more flexible for schools. Uh, because there's a teacher shortage. Uh, that's the kind of finding teachers, so they allow, they give them alternate pathways for. Uh, teachers to get into the field, either have experience. Uh, in a related area or have a degree without a teacher license, so. It opens us up wider to. But over the last several years, uh, to allow people to come in. Start working. As, as well as go through a program, get that licensure or work to the school. If several teachers have been drawn through that term of lessons in the board and in the district. Have success with that. But when you're looking at people applying. And get a list of applicants, you know, how do you ultimately make that type of decision of who's solid? And, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a difficult process. It comes down to more than just what's on the resume. Um, not just licensure. When we hire and wash. So when we're looking at candidates, it's not a summary that's just. And it checks the boxes. That's how you're candidates. We really look for who's the best. Qualified person. Coming in the right whisper. To match up that, just looking for that fit, who's that fit, not just on paper, but. Who's going to be able to embrace a green and healthy, sustainable. Who's going to look at inclusion and truly understand the value of each and every child. Not only each child, each and every child's learning style, who's going to bring that type of instruction? That flexibility, that care, that walk for the classroom. And so it goes beyond just. Where they go to school, what was their degree, what license they had, we really look for that ultimate fit because. We feel it's necessary to profess personally for the kids. And it's also fair in camps. We don't want someone to come into the district that, hey, they have this on paper. But then the expectation on inclusion is all the kids are in the class. You can teach all learning styles, you need to meet all those. Uh, needs. And you do embrace it and positive when the jetting into that. Then that's where the team looks at each of those candidates and they have that discussion, well, who's going to be the best fit? Those beyond just the instruction goes to who's going to be what the schools want. What are we looking for in an apartment? What are the different benefits that we have from this teacher, this teacher? Who's going to be that true team number? In our school, who's going to share that vision with that person? So it comes down more to just licensure and a resume, it comes down to that interview process. That team having that discussion. And ultimately, we select the best candidate. And sometimes those candidates are not fully licensed and DPI allows us to, um, extend that. Who is the candidate that's most accepted by us? That's kind of how, in a nutshell.
And, and then over the course of the year, they can get their instructional.
Some will be in a program, some will be matched up through a mentor and go through a program. Um, some will have a supportive, we provide them in the classroom, teaching strategy, and someone has a degree. They know the material, they know the talk. We provide them that support, uh, while they throw up in here and the mentor program posting.
Three years, you said? So, so it's, it's almost, I mean, is it like a three year, like, kind of probation, like? Yeah, okay.
And if they meet certain points. Then we check off at the end, if you have this fully, you know, life license.
Yeah.
Out of original license.
Yeah.
And everybody, certain staff who receive their license through, will be here, then can actually direct them to another school.
Ah.
There's different.
Okay, huh. Thanks for sharing.
Um, Ivy or Angie, you have anything you want to add to that? Because I know you're obviously very involved in all of the hiring.
I will add on top of what Tom said. Um, even before the interview process starts, when we get those applications, we go through them. To see, you know, if there's people that I have in common with somebody who has applied. I will reach out to people beforehand to find out about that person and is that person going to be fitting into our system and then? Is it worthwhile bringing in a candidate for an interview if? You know, if we already know, talking to somebody else, yeah, they're going to be a great fit, then, okay, let's bring them, or if I've heard some things that are concerning. Is it worthwhile? Um, so there's a lot of work that goes into it as principles when we filter through them. We talk to people, not just ourselves going, yep, 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 no, 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 like, there's a lot of people we talk to in that process beforehand as well. So there's a lot of work that goes into that hiring process and who gets chosen for that position, sometimes even before the interview process happens.
And it's not a decision that anyone takes lightly. Um, it's the future of our district, but it's also the future of our students. And just like Dr. Ritter said, it's the right fit, but it's also the right fit at the right time. And that's, it's a tough decision to make, but it's something that we have so many criteria and factors and people working together to then make that decision.
All right, let's go on to number twelve.
I move to approve Caitlin Hagan as sixth grade teacher pending DPI license approval.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to approve Alex Tormer as high school science teacher pending DPI license.
My second.
Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. I move to call for a vote to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four board goals.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to approve, uh, Craig Peterson as elementary student.
My second.
Any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, you're in, somebody wanted to read this to make the motion to go into closed session?
I move to, uh, convene into closed session for Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five one C. Considering the employment promotion or performance evaluation data of any public employee. For which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. The board may reconvene into open session and act on action items from closed session if deemed necessary and appropriate and continue with additional agenda items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Right.
I. Any opposed? Motion carried, going into closed session.